Good job, very, very well done. I'd like to introduce Coach Mike Proviano, who is our girls soccer coach. And he's going to be telling us a little bit about three particular girls that we're going to be recognizing this evening. His team was fourteen and three with a berth in the playoffs. Congratulations on a good season, Coach.
Thank you very much. (applause). Thank you. As Mr. McGuff said, we had a very good season this year. You know, went fourteen and three. Started off with a win at the Indiana tournament. First time we've won that in five years. And along with the success that you have with the team, you know, you get some awards and some individual accolades that we've received this year. I'm going to start off with a junior outside midfielder, Alexandra Gibson. She was voted, Ally was voted, come on up, Ally. Valley News Dispatch, All Honorable Mention, Area Team.[65.72][65.72](applause). We had another member that's not present tonight, actually, because she's playing for our basketball team. It's a sophomore, Ashley Amato. Ashley this year tallied eighteen goals for us. She was first team, all, actually, she was first team All-Section, and she was first team Valley News All-Area Team. You know, Ashley's a tremendous player. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of girls that are named All-Wipewell Team, and a lot of girls left out. You know, we all feel that she was one of the ones this year that was left out. She's as good as anybody that she plays against in the high school. I'm really looking forward to having her back for the next two years. Last but not least, Aleah Odom. Come on up, Aleah.[127.81][127.81](applause). Aleah led us this year with twenty-six goals. She had sixty-three for her career. It's far and away since I've been here, more than, forty-three goals, more than anyone that has played for me in five years. So I don't know where it stands, you know, all time, but I'm sure it's up there. It's been my pleasure to coach Aleah for four years. She's gotten better every season. Her achievements this year were rewarded by, she was named Valley News Dispatch High School Player of the Year. Also, she was All-Section and All-WPIL Player. First one that we've had here at Plum, I think, in the last ten years. So Aleah, actually, would you like to say a few words here? No? Aleah, okay. Aleah will be attending Clarion. She'll be majoring in physical therapy.
When you're done, I'm going to have her comment where she's going to be going to school.
Perfect. Okay. Well, obviously, he didn't hear me, so, but that's good. So, you know, I'd like to thank everyone, you know, like I said, we had a tremendous season, looking forward to big things. You know, we've made the playoffs for the last two years, and that's been a rarity around here in girls soccer. Thanks, Mr. McGuff.
Thank you so much. Congratulations on a great season. And we always have as a little bit of a tradition at our meetings that our seniors just give a brief comment as to what your plans will be after school.
I'm going to attend Clarion and go for athletic training.
Wonderful. Congratulations and thanks so much. Give her a nice.
Congratulations, girls.[242.62][242.62](applause).
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. And now it's a privilege to introduce another one of our coaches. And Coach I is an institution in our district and has done wonderful things with our cross-country program. I also see Coach Max, and I'd like to introduce now Coach Joe Ayanta.[266.47][266.47](applause). Our cross-country program, another successful year, ten and one during the regular season for the boys. The girls, six and five. Overall, their records, twenty-one and three for the boys and seventeen and nine for the girls. Another great season, Coach.
Before we recognize the cross-country team, give you some overview of it, I've been around a while, I'm sure everybody knows that, and this is the first time I'm going to be able to do a little bit of recognition to the, to the school board and to the community itself. I'd like to thank the school board and the administration, and especially the community, for all they've done for our Stampede in the Park. In seven years, we've been able to raise over a hundred and forty thousand dollars to leukemia research in, at Hillman Center. And it honestly would not have happened without the special community and special school district that we have. And I can say that because I've been here a while and I know the school districts around. We really need to understand how special Plum is. And just want to get a little bit of specifics. I want to thank some of the members of the board here who participated in the stampede. Our Assistant Athletic Director, Jeff Wolf, was coordinator of the race. Bob Alpino, with his bad back, was one of the race monitors. And last but not least, and this is probably a unique situation, we had our superintendent, Dr. Glasspool, was giving out water to the, to the runners at the Stampede. And I would guarantee this, that there's not too many districts around here that their superintendent is handing out water to the runners for, for one of the five Ks. And I really, really do appreciate that. Dr. G, and the entire school board. And would like to, from the Stampede, present this plaque to the school board. It says, "Presented to Plum Borough School District for their generous time and continuous support of the Stampede in the Park to stamp out leukemia." Thank you very much, and I think we should give them a hand.[410.12][410.12](applause). And now on to the, to the cross-country program. Mr. McGuff had said, we had, I thought, a really great year with regards to the, not only performance, but the number of athletes. We had sixty athletes who finished running in our cross-country program, which is, that's really truly outstanding, you know, for a school district our size. The, the girls went seventeen and nine. They were six and five in the section. Boys, ten and one in the section, finished second to an outstanding, outstanding Fox Chapel team. They also finished twenty-one and three overall. Finished twelfth in the WPIL, and not trying to make excuses, towards the end of the year, we were a little, a little banged up and a little injury prone, but they just did an outstanding, outstanding job of representing our school. And not only in the way they ran, but just the type of athletes that, that we do have. With all that idea of how well we did on the, on the courses, again, our greatest accomplishment was not running in, you know, in meets. Our greatest accomplishment was in, in the classroom. We had sixty runners that finished cross-country, fifty-five were honor athletes, which if you did the, that's ninety-two percent. We had forty-seven out of sixty that were scholar athletes, that's three point five and above. Do that math, it's seventy-nine percent. And I think really the most amazing is thirty of our sixty athletes had four Os. That, that's really, really outstanding. I know it's not because of their coach, but really, they just did an outstanding job in the classroom, just represented our school, you know, to the, to the greatest. And now for our, one of our recognitions, we'd like to recognize Jake Suselic. Come on, Jake.[547.12][547.12](applause). In, in all my years of coaching, this may be one of the most outstanding runners I've ever had, and one of the most competitive, and I'll tell you a little bit about Jake in a, in a minute. But Jake went to the States last year as a freshman. He's only the second freshman ever in Plum history that, that ever went to, to the States. This year, he, he also qualified for, for the States, finished third in our section. And the top two runners were probably one of the two best in the entire WPIL, and Jake finished third. He also was, finished third in an Invitational, second in a Uniontown Invitational, which the boys also won. And I'm giving all these accolades about him, and I can also tell you this, he had the least mileage run of any, I believe, WPIL runner. He was injured from September all the way through the year, but because of his heart, he was able to, again, qualify for the States with almost no, no mileage in him. And the fortunate thing for, for Jake is, is that he has two more years. And really, I believe he's going to be, you know, once he gets through the, the injury situation, which we're definitely going to, it's going to happen, he's going to be one of the most talented runners in, in the WPIL. And again, it speaks volumes for his competitiveness and his talent, that he was able to do the things that he did this year with the minimal, minimal training that he was able to have. And it was, it's been an honor and privilege to, to be Jake's coach.[665.23][665.23](applause). And again, want to conclude by, again, thanking the, the school board for all the support that they've given to our cross-country program. The program would not be where it's at if you didn't have the support of, of the board and of the school district that has. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Joe.[688.12][688.12](applause). Thank you, Coach. We'll make sure to hang that plaque in our boardroom.
All right, our next recognition is the girls volleyball team. Did Coach Scott Smithley make it? All right, there he is.[715.04][715.04](applause). As he's making his way up, just a couple comments about the team this year. The girls team won eight and seven, qualified for the Wipewell playoffs. And we have two girls who made the first team All-Section, four girls who made the second team All-Section, and one girl who made the third team All-Section. So congratulations on a terrific season.[732.44][732.44](applause).
Sorry, guys, I was coming from Ohio, but I wanted to stop at home and represent, so I had to grab a Plum shirt. Yeah, highlights of our year this year, we won the Plum Tournament, again, a big tournament this year, expanded it to twelve teams, I believe, and, or no, sixteen teams this year. We took first in that competitive tournament like it is every year, so it was a highlight of the year. We also took third in the section, made the playoffs again for the eighth year in a row. And as I go through the list of kids, you're going to hear a lot of non-seniors. So we've got a lot of young people here that are looking to break this one and done in the playoffs. We've got some kids that are dedicated to next year making the second round, third round, and, you know, continuing to push. With that being said, our section players, our third team was Megan Ringers, sophomore. Megan's an outside hitter for us, puts in a lot of time in the offseason playing club ball. She's doing all the things that are right. And when you're making All-Section as a sophomore, you definitely are. So Megan Ringers. Second team, we've got sophomore Matty Gestrich. Matty's a setter, again, another kid putting in a ton of time in the offseason, playing club ball, working out in the guys' gym, doing everything it takes to get better. When you see two sophomores standing up here, that lets you know the future's looking really good. Matty Gestrich.[831.94][831.94](applause). Sophomore Claire Hankinson. Claire's a repeat as a sophomore. She made All-Section last year and then this year. Claire's a middle hitter for us, and again, puts in a lot of time in the offseason, and you're going to be hearing a lot about this kid in the next couple of years, Claire Hankinson.[851.87][851.87](applause). Senior Sarah Carroll. Sarah's a setter for us as well.[857.31][857.31](applause). Put in her time last year, working with varsity, didn't see the court much in the offseason. Again, put in the time, did what it took to find the court this year, and it paid off making All-Section. Sarah Carroll.[872.62][872.62](applause). Michelle Tice, senior, outside hitter. Michelle made one of the biggest sacrifices a high school kid can do. She sat down and had a talk with her parents, and she said, "I'm going to step away from basketball, and I'm going to dedicate this year to volleyball." For those of you that played sports in high school, you know how tough it is to make a decision like that. Michelle came to us in the offseason, she said, "I'm going to do it. I'm going to give volleyball everything I can." Here she stands as an all-conference ballplayer. That tells you she made the right decision. Michelle Tice.[907.04][907.04](applause). And our first teamers, Courtney Zaza, which I think Courtney is tied up playing, tied up playing basketball. The way she's going now, she can keep playing both sports. Courtney's, Courtney's tearing it up on the hoops court. If you come watch her play volleyball, you'll see the same thing. So Courtney Zaza. And then finally, Rachel Satira. I just heard the previous coach talk about that special player. Rachel's it. She's got a lot of big-time schools looking at her. She handles it well. She's, you know, on the court, off the court, always has her head straight. Again, multiple All-Section performer, and another one you're going to be hearing a lot about from the future. So if you take a look, though, two seniors, two juniors, and a sophomore, that's a good framework for the, for the time to come. Thank you very much.[958.62][958.62](applause).
Thank you, Coach.
I would just like to ask our two seniors to take the mic and say what your future plans are before you go to school and what you're majoring in, please.
I'm going to be attending Seton Hill, and I'm going to be majoring in nutrition and dietetics.
I am undecided as far as school goes right now, but my intended major is either pharmacy, petroleum engineering, or actuarial science.[988.73][988.73](applause).
Thank you to all our student athletes, and once again, congratulations on terrific
Congratulations to all the student athletes, and congratulations to the coaches. Great examples of Plum Borough. If the students would like to leave, we'll give you a few minutes to leave now before we start our citizens' comments and the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you and congratulations again.
Everybody, a lot of torn looks pretty nice, huh? This is what they did. This is what they do on that thing.
All right.
Moving forward, are there any citizens' comments on agenda items this evening? If none, are there any citizens' comments on non-agenda items this evening?
Andrew Drake, Balkan Drive. First of all, let me wish you all a happy holiday and safe season. You know, we're getting close to that time now, and I hope you all have a very good, happy season with your families. A couple things, I know it's on the agenda, you'll be talking about an extension or a revision to Denny Russo's contract as our project manager on the new Holiday Park construction. And I'd like the citizens to, and the board to understand and to remember, you know, several months ago, when we were trying to go single prime, which is what we did with the Pivot School, one of the reasons was that the risk associated with the management of that project falls upon the, the single prime and not upon the school district. And we were successful in doing that. However, when we went to, to do the contract for Holiday Park, the state forced us to go to a multi-prime versus a single prime, even though we had been able to show the cost savings to the district. And so for one thing, I urge the citizens, if you don't like where we are, contact your legislators and tell them to change the law. It's wrong. But what this means by having a multi-prime is the district now carries the risk. This means that there's no one person, no, no single prime, no NILA construction, that's going to manage issues that arise between your HVAC, your ventilation guy, your plumber, your electrician, your steel erector, your contract, your, your concrete guy, or the person who's taking care of your masonry. Any issues that arise between those are going to fall to the district to resolve, and that means it's going to fall to Denny. That's a significant amount of work. I can tell you, I'm a certified project manager, I deal with this day-to-day. A single prime is much better than a multi-prime. A multi-prime needs a strong project manager and needs somebody on-site. And I'll tell you, you have lessons learned. Look at what happened with the renovations that were done at the high school, and at Center, and at O Block. This board for the last couple of years has been dealing with the latent errors that were made during those constructions. The O Block roof leaks, the high school roof leaks, the leaks in the plumbing system at Center. In addition to, we just found out as we're doing construction at Adley, that the gas line that was supposed to be buried several feet in the ground were only buried eight inches down, and when they started construction, the first big scoop they took, they hit the gas line. That comes from lack of project management on-site to make sure the constructors are building what they're supposed to be building to the specs. So I urge the board, what you have to pay for Denny to put that additional resources there is well worth the money, or ten years down the road, you'll be dealing with what you're dealing right now with the other schools. The other challenge you have is with the budget. And, you know, we've been hearing about the budget, at least a million, million and a half, without even taking into account potential pay raises. For the last couple of years, before I was on the board and when I was on the board, I put forth an idea to reduce the cost and still maintain the broad curriculum we have. This requires going from eight class periods to seven class periods. It would allow the district to restructure academics and maintain programs. Had we been able to do this last year, we could have saved the computer science program. But this means the teachers have to accept this, and they have to accept it now, not wait until three or four months down the road, where you'll be in the same situation where you're starting to cancel classes and you're having to make last-minute changes to the students, which is not the right thing to do. So I publicly urge the teachers to get on board and stop being a little bit distracted and accept this now. Worry about negotiating the contract, but accept this now and give the district the time they need to make the necessary adjustments to incorporate this for the students for the following school year, as well as bring significant savings to the district right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? If not, Dr. Glasspool, the agenda.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zucco, Chair, recommend approval to waive policy 707 for Rossler family use of facilities application as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to waive policy 707 for Rossler family use of facilities application as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to waive policy 707 for the Berks Regional Tennis Use of Facilities Application as presented.
I'd like to make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
Like to make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a revised agreement with Russo Construction Services for the new Holiday Park Elementary School Project as presented. The increase to fourteen thousand three hundred dollars per month is retroactive to December first, 2013, and is in effect for a fourteen-month period.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
I actually have a comment, if I may. I have no problem with revising the agreement. I would just like, maybe like to see a breakdown of, and I'm sure maybe other board members would too, of where this fourteen thousand three hundred dollars is, is going, just so we know who all is really going to be on staff, and, again, just a breakdown of that fourteen thousand three hundred.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on December tenth, 2013. Mr. Zucco will make this report.
On December tenth, we had the meeting at the school board meeting room, and we discussed several items, and one was the revised contract for Mr. Russo. And the reason for that, I think, was pretty well explained by Mr. Drake, and it's, the fourteen thousand is an additional fee. And what we're going to have is we're going to have these four different contractors now that we have to keep track of. And the breakdown on Mr. Russo's contract, we're going to have two additional people on staff to keep checking these things, because what happens is when we have the basic blueprints to carry out and make sure everything goes where it's supposed to go, the actual details are provided or established by the independent contractors. So we have to make sure that all of the square holes have square pegs, and nobody's trying to put a round hole, a round peg in a square hole, which means we can't have plumbing pipes going in the same place that we're supposed to have electrical or heating ducts or something like that. So there's going to be a lot more work involved, and that's one of the reasons we had to incorporate an increase to Mr. Russo. The, we also, one of the things we discussed was the floor restoration project at the Center School, which we had a problem very similar to this in another school earlier this year. And on this one, it's basically the same thing. We had a roof drain that was disconnected underneath the floor for some reason, or had never been connected. And the floor is separating away from the wall, and we're having that looked at by specialists from Pennsylvania Rock and Soil, and we're getting an evaluation of what it's going to take to correct that situation. We're going to do a temporary situation fix by putting the drain from that particular section of the roof into a drain from another one. It's only a four-inch pipe, but below it, we couldn't find out where the water was actually going to. So this is only a temporary fix till we find out what the solution is actually going to be. Another thing we also discussed was the repair and renovation of the roofs of the high school, which one was put in, I think, in nineteen ninety-five, and the other one was nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. And in order to maintain the structural stability, they have to be maintained every so often. And since they're in instruction in the renovation of the school many years ago, there has been no real maintenance done on these. So we're looking at two different scenarios. One is to repair them and have them checked and repaired, and we're going to do that with thermal imaging and see if there's any actual structural damage or leaks. And the next would be to recode the roofs, and we're going to have contractors come in with samples of the type of roofs they would suggest, and we're going to have Mr. Russo come in with him and give us an explanation of what all might need done. So we're in the process working with that, and we're going to be getting bids on that. And I think that's, oh, and of course, we have naturally, we have the new Holiday Park School, which is going rather well. Everything was, the ground is level, the fence is around it, and security is in place. But again, like Mr. Drake mentioned, the first day they went to do some digging, we hit a gas pipe that was only eight inches underground. And again, with Mr. Russo's supervision, we're going to try to make sure these type of things don't occur when we build the new Holiday Park School. So we'll, we'll be keeping you up to date on that, but right now, everything looks pretty good, and that's all we have interesting for the facilities meeting.
Thank you. Next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January fourteenth, 2013, immediately following the Transportation Committee meeting in the high school boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kevin Dal Dal, Chair, recommend approval to hire Kristen Ribadi, speech and language teacher, master of Step One, prioritized salary of fifty thousand dollars, with an effective date to be determined by the superintendent.
I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Danian Haller, long-term health and PE teacher, substitute teacher at Center and Holiday Park Elementary Schools, retroactive to August twenty-third, 2013, through January twenty-seventh, 2013. through January 27th, 2014.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
Just real briefly, it goes back to August 23rd, and that's because prior to that, it was not a long-term subposition. You have to wait, is it 90 days?
90 days.
90 days for it to be a long-term sub, so it's been 90 days now, so we're retroactivating, making this motion to make it a long-term subposition.
Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Jenna Capelli, long-term sixth-grade substitute teacher at Center Elementary School for the second semester of the 2013-14 school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a maternity leave for Dana Iera, school psychologist, beginning on or about April 30, 2014, through September 1, 2014.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an unpaid leave for Nancy McCormick, food service worker at Holiday Park Elementary School, beginning December 19, 2013, through February 16, 2014.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mrs. Gallagher Chair, recommend approval to accept a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Highmark Foundation for Plum High School.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following overnight field trip as listed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Air Force JRO T C agreement as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Trebron Agreement as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a $2,360 donation from the Plum Distinguished Alumni Committee.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
Yes, I would just like to say that the money is being donated for a touchscreen computer that-
Will be placed in the media center in the library. On this computer will be resumes, biographies, and also interviews of the distinguished alumni that we have inducted into our Wall of Fame. Hopefully, students will be able to use this for research, for any career papers that they might possibly have. Currently, we have 22 inductees, and so they represent a large range of career opportunities. So in January, what we're doing now is we're going to induct our new 2014 class. So hopefully, there will be people out there in the community who will nominate other students or past students for our committee. Actually, you will, they will not be able to be considered until 2015, but the application is on the website, so I encourage anybody who knows past graduates who have achieved in a certain career to certainly put in a nomination for them, and they will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Any other discussion on the motion? No other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Education Committee met on December 10, 2013. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
I'd just like to make a few comments about the Highmark Foundation Grant. It is something that will be the Mustang Fit Club, and it's going to promote Plum Family Fitness Nights, incorporate family and community in an attempt to promote fitness. I also wanted to congratulate the high school again for being named to the A P District Honorable. Just having the motivated academic preparation for our students, I think, is a wonderful thing, and I think we're headed in the right direction. And I also, one of the discussion items that we did discuss at our Education Committee was something that Dr. Rossi had brought to our attention, and that was a camp invention, which would be offered to our community, our Plum students, and we're going to have some further discussion on that, but that would be an additional summer program offered here to our community, and it would be basically hands-on and problem-solving. So I think that that's going to be something, a wonderful addition to, in addition to our already Plum summer programs.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 7, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Finance Committee, Mr. Tom McGuff Chair, recommend approval of Treasurers Report and Bill Payments for November 2013 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees collected by Andrews &amp; Price for November 2013, total amount collected $83,271.24. Recommend approval to settle the following commercial tax assessment appeals as presented. There are six, I'm sorry, five properties listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just a comment, Mr. Maricini, could you just give us a brief overview of the money we set aside for these properties and?
Yes, we had a direction from Judge Weddick to set money aside for assessment appeals. That amount that we set aside was $161,000, and that's where this would come out of.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, last year, we did set the money aside, because we anticipated we'd see these types of assessments due to the, I'm sorry, appeals due to the reassessment. I saw on the news about a month ago that the city of Pittsburgh, they lost about $10 million in assessment appeals because they did not plan ahead of time for these types of appeals, but I'd like to commend the board for, you know, considering this situation where we would be able to account for these types of assessment appeals. The numbers will add up quite a bit here.
Just one last comment, there is a tremendous amount of work from Andrews &amp; Price to make sure that this district is sound and moves forward with all these assessments, so. Any other comments? If no other comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Finance Committee met on December 10, 2013. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
Just very briefly, we had an opportunity to discuss the earned income tax, both the delinquent and current earned income tax. We had a chance to discuss the Tax Collector's Report for the month of December. We had a look at the monthly revenues and expenditures comparison for the month of November 2013, and in the process, just talking with Gene, in the process of reviewing the R F P, updating that for insurance brokerage services, independent auditing services, and banking and investment services. And in January, we will be taking our first look, and our Finance Committee meeting is on the 21st, we'll be taking a look at our preliminary 2014-2015 budget, and from there, we'll be determining the direction that we take, whether it be for a, asking for a variance or a resolution not to exceed the index. And on behalf of our committee, I would like to just wish a wonderful, happy holiday season to all of our stakeholders, our community, and all the folks in our district.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Policy Committee, Mrs. Michelle Steppen, Chair, there is no report this evening. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 7, 2014, following the Education Committee meeting in the High School Boardroom. Transportation Committee, Mr. Joe Tomorello, Chair, there is no report this evening. The Transportation Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, January 14, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Athletic Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair, recommend approval to amend the Assistant Rifle Coach stipend to $1,818 as listed in the collective bargaining agreement.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following 2013-14 spring coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation as well.
Second? We have a motion and a second. More than one second. Is there any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the volunteer 2013-14 spring coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation as well.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There'll be no report this evening from the Athletic Committee. Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Mrs. Loretta White, Chair, Mrs. White will make this report.
I talked to Mrs. Lazaro this morning, and she wanted me to wish everybody a happy holiday from the Food Service Department and all the food service workers. And our next meeting is January 21st.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair, the Intergovernmental Committee met on December 11, 2013. Mr. Zucco will make this report.
We met with the borough officials in an intergovernmental meeting, which is, I guess, they get to know each other and talk about things that are happening in each other's jurisdictions. And one of the things we talked about was the sale of the administration building that which is located on School Road, which is still a pending project, but without rezoning, it kind of stalemaided. So what we're going to do is, we have, we had two people interested in buying that building, and the deals fell through, so now we're going to let the gentleman who's interested in it, let him pursue getting any changes or variances done at his expense, and then let us know how that works out. We will also have a, the borough is conducting a comprehensive safety structure, I believe it's going to be in January and again in May, and what it basically, we're going to have pedestrian and bus safety curriculum. And that's, it's not just for the students, it's for the parents and anyone walking or stopping at the bus stops and parking their cars in an unsafe manner, so we want to keep those bus stops clear. And then we also discussed probably some of the interesting, more interesting items would probably be what's going to happen to the old civic in the old Holiday Park School. And we, the, how do I say, Public Works is very interested in expanding the allotment of money and expansion of the size of their park system and improvements to their park system. And we are in discussion with them as to what to do with some of the properties when our schools are going to be either torn down, sold, or what have you. So they're interested in that, and we are interested in it. And the last item was that with their new municipal works, public works buildings between Old Leachburg and Renton Road, they have a number of acres, and we discussed the possibility of getting some of that acreage to make a new bus garage for current bus situation. Right now, I believe we have a very small area, and a lot of things need repaired, including the building, the fuel storage tanks, et cetera. And they seem quite receptive to working out some kind of agreement between the borough and the school district where we might be able to locate a new bus garage up at that facility area. We haven't got into any details, and I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but we're looking at that situation, and the word has it that we're getting a lot of good feedback from that. And our next meeting will be next month, and we'll see how that progresses. That's it for our intergovernmental meeting.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Ledger, Representative, Mr. St. Ledger will make this report.
Yes, thank you. We met in November, and actually, in November, we had our occupational advisory, local advisory in Perkins participatory committees. We had 200 representatives from the community attend. The current enrollment is 777 students, and we'll be conducting our reorganization meeting on Thursday night, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White, Representative, Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, we met last week, and we were given new enrollment figures. Actually, from Plum, our enrollment went up by four students, so that means that currently we have 14 students attending Sunrise. We were given an independent auditor's report for 2013 from Mayor Drusel, and we were also given an update on work that was done in the building. Most of the meeting was spent discussing a proposal by Mrs. McDonough. She would like to have playground that the students can use, an outdoor playground. However, there are so many pros and cons involved in that, that we need to do a little bit more research. So as I said, most of the meeting was spent talking about liability and things like that that would impact even the amount of money that we give them. So the next meeting is January 23 at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Joe Tomorello, Representative, recommend approval for Joe Tomorello to attend the NSBA Advocacy Institute on February 2 through 4, 2014, in Washington, DC.
I'll make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
Just a couple of comments. First, I'm going to abstain from this vote since it's on myself, and secondly, just some information about the Advocacy Institute in DC in February. It's an opportunity for myself and other Federal Relations Network representatives to attend Washington, DC, this institute and learn about what is happening in DC on the federal level with education. There's going to be a couple of guest speakers, journalist Bob Woodward and Dr. Bernice King, MLK Junior's daughter, and we're going to have a chance to meet with our state representatives and Senators, State Representative Keith Roffess and Senators Toomey and Casey. I'll be meeting with them, and I'll be sure to inform the board of what I learned at that level.
Thank you.
You know, I hate to be petty, but how is this being financed? The trip to Washington, DC, is, do they pay for it?
The district covers the cost.
Are, we cover the costs?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a figure on that, or?
Probably expenses, probably hotel costs and I guess mileage.
Hotel, travel, mileage, maybe some meals.
Okay, I mean, you know, I think it's well worth it. I mean, I, certainly for this, I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
It may end up being a couple hundred dollars, I would guess.
Just a couple hundred?
Oh, well, what, two nights in a hotel, gas and meals.
Okay, okay, because usually whenever, you know, we go on field trips or people go on field trips, we always find out how much it's going to cost us.
Yeah, it's going to be registration, mileage, and hotel.
Okay. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I think, you know, that I'm looking forward to your report when you come back.
Thank you. I think it's important for us as a district and board members, administration, to get involved with our, not only the state government, but our federal government as well, and learn what's coming down the pipeline in the future.
I think it's important that we continue the networking that we have within the state and the federal government. We spend a lot of time doing that at the board level. I think it's important that we send somebody here.
I think it's important that we send somebody here, just as Tom McGuff is just one of, one of the super Western Pennsylvania representatives, the IU. He never, he brings back information to us on a monthly basis, and we hope that at this level, we can at least get better information and maybe influence people on, on what we think the federal government should be doing with their tax dollars. So, any other discussion?
I have one thing, I do think it's well worth it. Somebody who, I've worked with many of those federal legislators, the only thing I would recommend from, I know from going back and forth in DC, and it may be just trying to save the district a little money, I would look into flying because you may be able to get into BWI or to Reagan much cheaper than driving over.
Any other discussion? If no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Tomorello, do you have a report?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. At the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, we briefly talked about the state police report that came out. It seems like it was in lieu of like a year later of Newtown, Connecticut, school shooting. The Pennsylvania State Police issued a report about basically their recommendations of what school districts should be doing when it comes to safety and security. We haven't really had a chance to look into this report yet, but I'm sure over the next couple of weeks, administration and the board members will have an opportunity to digest the information that the state police put out there, and we will make any further improvements that we need to, to our safety and security measurements in our schools. And secondly, Pennsylvania State House Bill seventeen thirty-five, it is the House Bill where it discusses economic furloughs of teachers. It's just being talked about right now, there's three different amendments of this in the House, and we're just going to keep an eye on it and continue to monitor it and see where it goes, but it just gives school districts that are in financial distress the opportunity to furlough for economic reasons, which right now they cannot do. But other than that, that's all I have, and I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year.
Thank you. Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGuff, board member. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
We did not have a meeting in the month of December, but we did have Winter Fest last Friday, and there's just a lot of energy. It's been a good year, but I feel that to the person, and there are probably between twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred employees of the AIU, we are excited about the coming year and being able to translate some of the resources and some of the programs down to the local forty-two districts of Allegheny County. And like Joe, on behalf of the AIU, I would like to wish all of our community a very Merry Christmas and Happy Prosperous New Year. God bless.
Thank you. President's Report, Mr. Sal Kalella. Mr. Kalella will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. First, let me welcome Miss Steppen and Miss Gallagher to the board. I think you'll find it exciting, I think you found it exciting already, so, but welcome, and thanks for all the hard work that you're going to do in the future for us. It's great to serve the community. I also want to thank Mr. Coach Ionta for the kind words he said concerning the school board, but it actually reflects on the community. We are elected officials, and we do represent the community. December was a busy month, plenty of athletics, plenty of student performances, Keystone exams. The school district has been very busy, and it continues to be busy. On December the twentieth, Plum High School will make a Whistle-athon begins. The Plum Chamber of Commerce and King's Family Restaurant will be hosting a Breakfast with Santa on December twenty-first. That's on our website. If you print a coupon, you'll get ten percent off your check, and most importantly, the money, ten percent, some of that money will be donated to the Plum Elementary School libraries. As a result of conducting a Bounce-Athon, I didn't know what a Bounce-Athon was, but it was actually a very successful project, project bundle-up, the Pivik students raised five thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's just amazing, and they were invited to participate at WTAE on December the sixth to present the check. So, congratulations to the students from Pivik. Just a reminder, no school December twenty-third through January the first. First day of school is back on January the second. And happy holiday greetings from the board to everybody. I think everybody said that, but truly, I hope you have a happy holiday. Just a couple other things, business things. We finally, I think, will be having our annual financial report presented to us this month. Extremely important, we need to know our fund balance moving forward for the budgeting process. That board should be receiving that very shortly. In addition to that, we do have a teacher's contract, a Plum Borough Education Association contract that the district will be negotiating with. The district will be using Mr. Kevin Dal Dow, our Personnel Chair, will be part of the negotiating team. Michael Brewer from Administration and Lee Price, our Solicitor, will be the team. Their first meeting will be January the tenth. And that's all I have, Dr. Glasspool. Congratulations to everybody and the student athletes, and happy holidays again. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, recommend approval to accept the Superintendent's Report as submitted.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend formal support of the Plum Borough School District's official request for placement into QUAD A Section Three Football Conference for the upcoming school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Glasspool, can you just expound upon that a little bit about what we plan to do?
Yes. As many of our residents know that we were placing a community out in the South Hills, a football conference out in the South Hills, and, for two years, and it's taken quite a toll on, on our, our fans as well as our team. The cost, the actual hard cost for two years in that conference is twenty thousand dollars, increased time on the road, and some other challenges that had presented our football program. We have written three letters. The board has made one formal resolution. This would be our fourth, our fourth letter and second formal resolution to the Whipple Board of Control to be placed in Section Three. This year, the football conferences went from four conferences in QUAD A to three conferences in QUAD A. Recently, Gateway School District announced that they are going to play triple-A football. By them playing triple-A football, they've opened up a place in Section Three, which is out in the east, east section, the majority of the teams are out in the east side of Pittsburgh, an opening. This is our formal request to be placed in the Section Three in the east and play with the schools in our, in our area as opposed to the South Hills.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Announcements, the regular January board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven p.m. back in the Plum High School Auditorium.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, and good night.